Okay. I have, this is a special meeting of the Marquette Township Board. We are via teleconference, obviously, and today is Thursday, June 4th. It's just 4:04 PM. We're going to dispense with the flag since it's a special meeting, but if you do roll call, Randy, please.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Treasurer Johnson. You're muted, Ernie, you're muted.
Here.
And Supervisor, or Clerk Rattar is here and Supervisor Durant.
Here, okay, well, President.
Yeah, we have for our staff present, Manager Gerard is here, Attorney Roger Zap is here. Looks like staff president is Brenda Helgren, our Accounts Clerk, John Kengas, our Superintendent of Public Works, and Lois Stonehouse, our accountant.
Hey. Any public comment, Randy, on emails or anything?
I have none for email, nope.
Okay. Anybody in the audience who wants to say anything before we get started? Okay, we'll proceed to make sure that we have a delay to make sure we have time. So we can get approval of the agenda.
The Clerk approves, makes a motion to approve the agenda, special agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, Randy, please.
Clerk Rattar is yes, Trustee Marks.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yeah.
Trustee Iverson.
Yes.
Trustee LaRue.
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson.
Yes.
Director Grant.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. I'm not aware of any conflicts of interest of the Board. So we can get in, right into the discussion of direction for the position of Township Manager. We received a notification yesterday from our candidate that he is withdrawing. And the Board did receive that as well as some of the staff. So our next step is to consider our options, of which we have maybe a half a dozen. I'm sure you guys have had a chance to think about this overnight. I listed a few options that I think we could look at, and you may have other ones. And I don't like all of these, but this, this is what I came up with. First of all, I think we need to find out a couple of things. They don't have to be right now, I'm just kind of going through the list. Will our recruiter continue with the contract? Do we want him to continue with the contract? Will our manager work for another year or some timeframe with an extension? Or do we want him to? We have previous candidates who've applied, we have the runner-up, if you would, the second candidate that also asked not to be considered as a second at the time. We have a couple of employees who have placed an interest. And one actually applied officially, the other was more verbal. We can start a whole new search. We could. I guess I'm, I'm back down to Randy, I had him on here twice. So unless somebody's got some other options, that's what I came up with to discuss. Dave, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I would just inquire of, of the manager if he would be amenable to extending his contract to December 31st of 2021.
I had some discussion with my, with my family, and they would like me to retire not quite that far into the future. I guess it depends on where the Board wants to go with this. I mean, if, depending what option you check or, or go with, you know, if you're going to consider one of the internals, then, you know, I would definitely extend through August. That would give you nine months almost, basically working with that, with that individual, whether it's any one of the three or four that might be, might be capable. If you go with your second choice, if you go with Pat, he's probably going to need a month notice where he's at, and then relocation, same thing, I mean, through August would be, would be 30, 45 days working with him. I could go into next year, but really, at my age, I don't know that I really want to commit to go to another year and a half. I'm already six months past where I planned on retiring.
I guess the question would be, is how far would you consider going into an extension? Would you go to the end of this year, or would you go to June of next year, or?
I think he just.
But again, that's going to depend on what happens with the Board. You're in kind of an unusual situation. You're going to be having, facing an election coming up here in November, where you, you could have some significant change to the governing body. I mean, you're going to have, you're going to have two uncontested seats open. So we have no idea what that means in terms of who might be running and how many might be running. You have a contested supervisors' race. Some of what I would do will depend on what happens there, obviously. If those two seats get filled by contentious Board members, I'll have no interest in continuing. If they get filled by Board members that have a different view of what the township needs to look like, I can't go with that. So, yeah, I guess I'm in kind of a tough spot. I would, I would consider going to the end of the year, for sure. But I don't want to lock into something committing for another total year that might be with a Board that was unacceptable.
Well, I guess what I would, would propose then is, would be my idea is to extend it to December 31st of 2020. And I think that if nothing else, it gets us an opportunity to fall back. And I think we need to clean up our process a little bit, and not so much do it different, but clearly define how it's done. So, because what, what the supervisor has for an idea and what I have for an idea, they differ on a few things, and I understand it different than she understands. You can read the same sentence and understand it differently. And I think we've got that amongst seven Board members.
Oh, you're up there now.
We, we all say that we, we understand the way it's supposed to go, but when it gets right down to it, my understanding of, of reading a sentence or how something's supposed to be done is different than somebody else's. And I think we need to take some time to iron that process out and put it step by step, how the process is going to go. For example, if it was written, if it was part of the steps that the Board approved the initial contracts presented to the candidate, and then the negotiating committee and the candidate worked to come up with a mutually agreeable contract, and then brought that back to the Board with a recommendation, I think this one would have went a whole lot smoother. That wasn't my understanding of what they were supposed to do. I'm sure if you ask the other six guys or seven people, six guys on the Board, they got a different understanding of what's supposed to happen. I think we need to write it down step by step, so everybody understands the process from the time we start until the time we finish. And I think we need to take some time to get that done, to clean the process up.
And I guess in, in response to, you know, the, the initial question that Dave raised, I think where you're, where you're running into issue here is, you know, we've talked about this before, you're, you're departing from your normal recruitment process. You, you have a specified recruitment policy that we have always used for every vacancy that's come up, regardless of whether it was building your grounds caretaker or Superintendent of Public Works. And it was the process that was followed when I was hired back in 2002. Basically, what, what that process does is it takes individual opinions out of the mix and places the decision process for qualified candidates based upon your specific job description. Your job description is tied specifically to the pay range. And, you know, once you depart from that, you know, and we had this discussion a number of times, either leave the position in the compensation system or take it out as an individual contract. And I think where it fell apart was the original proposal that was made, the Board was fully comfortable with. We expected, or should have expected, a counterproposal. The problem was, is the counterproposal, it's like anything else. You shoot for the moon and hope to land someplace between Earth and Moon. And that should not have been communicated to the Board. That should have been in the province of the supervisor and the clerk to negotiate down to what they thought was a reasonable contract, and then that should have been presented to you folks for consideration to say yes or no. You know, but once you get into an individual debate, and you're absolutely right, Dave, you have seven different opinions, actually, you've got eight opinions here, because Frank was involved in that as well, of, of what you have before you. With regards to how long I'm, I'm willing to go, it's not just my decision. I mean, I think you all know, I've told you before, I'll, I'll stick in as long as it takes for you to get somebody in place that you're comfortable with and that's a good fit with the organization. I also have six other members of my family who hammer on me pretty, pretty good saying, Dad, you're almost 72, it's time for you to step down, you know, and to, to start getting back involved with the family more so, because of, you know, as you know, I've been here a lot. You know, more than I think any of you expected, but that's just my work ethic, that's just me. You know, and that's, that's the way I feel about the township, and I've told you that before. So I'm willing to be flexible, but to a point, because I also have six other constituents that I have to keep happy as well. So I, I think if you fall back to your existing recruitment policy, and whether it's Frank, or whether it's Lynn and Randy, or whoever it is that manages that process and then brings back to you a recommendation with, with rationale or consideration, then you're in the decision process. I think if you do that, you'll be much better off.
Thanks for that, Randy, that was a nice summation. I told him today I didn't appreciate the way the Board was using him like a wet mop and just taking advantage of the fact that, well, Randy will stay, Randy will stay. It's not fair. It would be great if he would, and we'd all be happy, and we can keep going as we're going. But, you know, he's already given us an extra six months. This should have been done by December, and I, it's just not fair.
Just because. By, by the same token, I'm not leaving town either, you know? It's like, you know, I've got all my files, you know, everything that we've ever done is in the server. You know, all the background information is there, so whoever comes in is going to have all of the information that I have. But I'll be honest with you, I retired from the county 20 years ago. And they still call me for, for information with issues that, that reach way back with long-term employees and agreements and understandings and contract negotiations. What was the basis for this language, you know, and all that kind of stuff? So, you know, I'm used to that kind of activity.
Okay, somebody else had their hand up, was it Pete, the screen shifted? Was it, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, I, I'm missing the majority of the conversation here. I wonder if Randy would call me on the phone, so he'd tap me in, so I can, I don't miss any. I don't know what the options were or whatever. So I missed the whole thing, you know, I, I'm only getting half of the reception that you are.
Basically, well, can you do that first, and then I can run through them quickly, Randy?
Peter, can you go out and come back in, maybe that'll clear it up?
I already did that once, I'll do it again.
Yeah, do it out, no, do that, come back, and maybe we'll be better.
All right, thank you.
We can hear you fine, so.
Yeah, see, I missed all the conversation that you were doing, so, all right.
Let's give it a second.
It'll be much better when we get back together, unfortunately, but, you know, it is, so. Ernie?
Well, give it a second, Ernie, because then he won't be able to hear you either. We have some important decisions to make, and I don't want to leave anybody out. I want to make sure we've all got the same information.
Yeah, if I have to, I'll dial Pete in, but we'll see if he can give back here.
Dan's trying to get in twice.
Well, I'm trying to get in on my laptop. I was there, I was there, but Randy didn't let me in, so.
Oh, no, you're in, you're just not connecting to the audio again, Dan.
Well, the last time it came up, it said that, I was waiting for the server to let me in, but now it's, now it's not doing it again. Oh, there we go.
Okay, Dan, looks like you're connected, you can get off your.
There.
That is.
That's what happens when you have. Yeah, turn your phone off, Dan.
It's off.
Let me turn the phone right off.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, you're, you're fine.
I'm better now.
Try Pete again.
Yeah, he's coming back in here. It might have been that update too, that there was an update that Zoom sent out maybe yesterday or the day before, and that's.
Sure, I had to do the same thing.
So I'm thinking that's what some of the problems, problems are, so. But that's fine, we have some time, it's not like we're. Okay, Pete's coming back now, so hopefully he can. Can you hear us now, Peter?
Am I still be on?
Yep.
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Apparently not.
You hear me now?
Yep. Can you hear us?
Now I can hear you.
Okay. A quick synopsis is, was, of, of was, what it was. Was a couple of questions about the recruiter, whether Frank would be willing to finish out his contract and still work with us, whether we wanted him to do that, whether we wanted to look at previous candidates, specifically the last person that applied with Tom, the second runner-up. And we also had two employees who expressed an interest, one officially and one other unofficially. Do we want to start the search all over again? And there was quite a bit of discussion on what Randy was willing to do time-wise, if he was, wanted to stay until December 31st of 21. And he pretty much said no, that he's willing to work with us, but not to that extent. His family is anxiously waiting for him. Can you hear me?
I'll dial him in.
You're going to have to.
Yeah, I'll dial him in here. Let me get his number here.
Yeah.
Peter, this is Randy.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to immediately hear then. Okay, what you're going to have to do, Peter, shut your, shut your computer right down, because you're, we're getting an echo. Okay.
All right.
Okay. So you can hear us, right, Peter, yeah?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, so Lynn, if you want to continue on.
Yeah, what's the last thing you heard, Pete, you know?
What's the last thing you heard, Peter?
I never heard, sorry, I never knew, I never heard the options or nothing, so I was trying to. I can't, I can't hear if she's talking right now.
She's not. Okay, so if you want to try again, Lynn will go again here.
All right. Tell him to stop me if he can't hear.
Can you hear that, Peter?
No, I can't, I can't, I heard that in the background way back.
Okay, well, I don't, I can't, I don't know if I can get. All right, I'll put the phone right here, so you should be able to hear that.
All right, I'll try X.
Try again, Lynn.
Tell me, tell me, stop me, so I don't have to go through it if I, if you can't hear me. So, one of, our first option is to continue with Frank as our recruiter, let him finish out the contract as he agreed. Or say, no, thank you, we're finished, we're going to do a different direction, whatever that is. We can also look at the previous candidates and see if anyone else is still interested. We had a runner-up candidate to this candidate we're talking about, and we had two employees who expressed an interest, one, one formally and one informally. And we can basically start all over again. The question of how long and how willing Manager Gerard is to continue as manager. He pretty much said he would not do it until 12:31, 21, but he's willing to work with us at least for a few months. He's concerned about the election that's coming up and the changes that might happen to the Board. And if he has, if he's uncomfortable with some of the candidates who could get chosen in the election, that he might just not bother at all and not continue to work with us. So he can spend a few months if he wants some, we want some interim training, he's willing to do that. He's welcome to the idea of being able to call him, ask him follow-up questions. So we're kind of. That's kind of all of our options that are available. Randy also suggested, and you can chime in, Randy, I don't like to speak for you, but suggested that we make sure we follow the processes that are already in place with the professional union, the professional administrative, da-da-da, organization that lines up with the pricing chart. And either Randy, Rattar, and I work with that, with whatever recruiter or however that happens, and follow that process through, rather than the Board being a part of the entire process, as it was this time. Did you get all of that?
Can I come in on that?
Yes, you can, but other people had their hands up while we were waiting for you.
Oh, okay, I can't see any hands on this.
Sure, let me go to Ernie, because he had been waiting for you. And then you'll have to do something to let me know you want to talk. Go ahead, Ernie.
Okay, listening to what's going on, Randy said, the end of the year, that's fine. But his family, and maybe I've been in that fixture too, and it's time to get out, time to enjoy life. And maybe my age is showing up too, that you, you're looking at the windows, the windows start closing. So you want to make sure you have some time left to enjoy yourself and your family and that. And I don't think we can expect him to go that distance and that. My feeling is this, if you wait until the next Board, you don't know who's going to be on the Board. You could be another six months trying to get someone to come in. You have no choice on that, you have no options on that, because you don't know what the makeup of the Board's going.
No, we lost Ernie.
This is getting ridiculous.
Yeah, fortunately, yes.
Can you hear us at all, Ernie?
He kind of just froze.
It has to be the individual, the individual computers.
Yeah, it's not, it's not our connection here, it's the individual connections at their house. And maybe that update is having a big, sounds like it's a big issue with what's going on.
Must be.
Ernie's going to come back.
Why don't we postpone this meeting until next week?
I don't think we have the time, Peter, we got to move right now. Ernie's coming back in right now.
I don't know what happened, my Zoom went on. So what I'm saying is that what we did, I think we had to do some changes on how, how we handle it overall, and that. We had the two individuals in that, we should have had the two individuals working with Frank, and that was it, and once it came, they got something back from the candidate, it should have come back to the Board. We probably should never have received the original response from the candidate at that point in time. That created too many problems, and that, I can see that. Maybe I've seen too many applications in my lifetime and that. But I don't want to kick the can down the road at all, at this point in time. I want to move forward now. We have the runner-up candidate, we can look at that, we can look at internally, or we can have Frank go out and see if there's someone else out there. But I want to get this resolved within the next three to four months. Whether it's possible, I don't have any idea. But if we go forward, we're going to have to have, and I don't know if Lynn and Randy are going to be involved with it or want to still stay with it or not, but turn it over to Frank, like it should have been at the beginning and that, let him do the work, and then come back to the Board, and let the Board make the final decision on that. Get our fingers out of it, because all it does is create problems and that. We have to make a decision as to, do we want to go with any one of the possible three candidates we have, know about? Or do we want to go out and look, look again? I don't know, but I don't want to kick the can down, down the road any longer. Randy wants to retire, and I don't blame him a bit, maybe because I've been retired for 24 years, I enjoy it now, up to a point. I know what my family said when I was getting ready to retire, get out, enjoy yourself. And that's what he's going through right now. And I don't think we can push him to work longer than he really should. Life is too short, way too short. Too many things can happen, too quickly, and that, and you're out of it. So I want to move forward on it, and I don't have the best way, but start looking at what we did, and improve on it, and move forward on that. Okay, I have my say.
Okay.
Randy, tell me when I can say something.
John Marks is next, and Lynn will tell you when you can speak.
Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
I think there is, what we've been listening to, it sounds like Randy is more than our manager, is more than willing to stay till the end of the year. If there is a difference in the Board, if we just left it to let him come back and stay for the rest of the year, he would then know whether he had to deal with a, a Board he doesn't want to deal with. All we could do would be ask that he would stay till the end of the year, and then with options that he would be able to decide if the status was such, whether he wanted to stay any longer, and whether the status with his own family would be such that he could stay any longer. So I think if we can get, that's something we can resolve and get behind us. We could do that tonight.
John, he's already said that he's willing to stay a few months, but what does that do?
He's, he said, earlier I heard comments that made me think he could stay till the end of the year, but didn't want to get committed beyond that because of Board changes that could occur and things like. Let's find out whether that's so or not, if it's not.
Well, that was Dave's recommendation and his question to him, but.
Dave, they want him to stay into next year.
Right, to what end though? What, what good would that do? That would give us a.
To get him till, to. To get him to, to make sure that we have a manager till the end of the, this year would be an acceptable breathing point for this board.
Okay, let's go back to Pete.
Peter, you're, you're up.
Okay. All right. My, my comment would be, Randy's willing to go, you know, stay on for a while. I think we should take John Kangis' name and put it back into mix. I, to be honest with you, I, I'd wanted John to come on, have the superintendent, and to work out some of the little nooks and crannies that we have. He's very qualified in that, he'd be very qualified as a manager. So I would have Randy stay and to work with John Kangis, if, if we decide that's who we could use, and he'd be willing to do it. But I think we have an asset there of what we've seen so far with some of the in our budget things. We were talking about different things he's doing with his reporting and that. I think he'd do a heck of a job, so, and he's here, and so that's what I'd say.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
What, the candidate from Crystal Falls, have you had any contact with him since he told you he didn't want to be?
No.
No?
I brought his name up because he was the next person. I was trying to figure out what, what our options were, who our candidates could be.
I mean, we, we all liked him also, and I just, I would like, I think I would at least like to, to hear if, knowing what, what he knows, or knowing what we know now, that, that Mr. Marcus does not want to partake in this. At least hear what he has to say. We, we, we have Randy to, to be there, so we do have a little bit of time. But I agree, I mean, retirement is wonderful, and I strongly encourage him to take part in that. I, I don't know, we're in a tough place.
Well, I think we need to back up, I know, Dave, but I want to give everybody a chance to talk. I think we need to back up a little bit and find out where we fit with Frank. If he's willing to work with us or not, if we want to continue that, if we want to, you know, I don't know protocol, ethics, or legally whether we're, we'd have to go through Frank to get to Patrick again, because we still have a contract with Frank, you know, some of that might have to be figured out. But if we're going, we, we have someone we have a contract with, so we either need to let him go do his job again, or end it. I, I don't know if there's a third choice to that. So that's not only up to us, it's up to him. He may say, you know what, I'm tired of you guys, this is done. Figure out the contract and we're finished, and we'd have to go get somebody else.
Well, let's hear from Frank.
Yeah, so I think we need to do that before we go too much farther. We kind of know where Randy stands. He's willing to, he's willing to be here for at least a few months till we figure this out. But let's, let's get Frank's two cents first, please.
Dan?
Peter, Frank speaking.
Hello, everyone. I'm looking forward, I'm not looking back. And I'm here, and I'm going to help you finish the process, whether that's now, or in two months, or where you want to go. It would make sense if you're going to talk to any candidates that you've talked to before that have been in the process, that I handle those discussions for you. And however you want to handle it, I'm not going to charge you anything. My work has been done, it's been completed, but I'm not going to charge you anymore. And I will stay with you as long as you need me. I just want you to end up in a good place with this process. And I'm going to look forward and not backwards. So whatever you need, you tell me, and we'll get there at the end.
Okay, thank you, Frank. All right, Dave, go ahead.
Oh, I believe, but considering what Frank has said, I, I think, and we've already talked about this, if we're going to leave it with Frank, then we should leave it with Frank. And if we have people in-house who would like to get involved in this and present themselves, then they should present themselves to Frank. He should do the analysis, he should bring back the candidates that, if number-two candidate is still interested, whatever he comes up with, leave it in his house, let him come back with the candidates, and start the process from there. We don't have to go out and, and we don't have to throw everybody that's, that we've talked to in the trash can and start from scratch. Just leave it with Mr. Walsh and let him come back with some candidates that, whether we've already talked to him, or whether they're in-house and they now get a hold of him, whatever, if that's his job, then that's his job. So we shouldn't start stepping in and deciding we want to do a little bit here and a little bit there. Just let him do his job. In the meantime, we should extend the manager's contract to December 31st of 2020. And if nothing else, that allows us to, if we get a candidate by some miracle in the next two or three months, that allows a transition of another couple of months.
I agree with that.
I, I also agree, and, and I would like to say one other thing. Thank you to Frank for trusting us, I guess, and, and hanging in there with us. It's, I know it's been frustrating for you, and, and it's new to a lot of us, and we'll get through it. Thank you.
So do we have a consensus that we're continuing to use the recruiting services of Frank Walsh?
Yes.
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 Yes. Only if he can do his job.
John and Dave, you're good with that?
Yeah, it was my idea.
I didn't hear a yes. Okay.
Keep our noses out of it, I guess.
Well, that's the big thing for me, if we just need to back off and just let him present the candidates and, and do what he's there to do, and we, the board needs to keep their nose out of it until we've got a contract that we can consider presented from the candidate through, through Frank.
And I don't want to hear anybody say, can I see that bef, can we see that, will it come to the board before this happens, because it's not going to happen again. It's not. Frank?
So here's what I would suggest after listening to all of you. And let me just say, I think working with this board has been enjoyable for me. I've enjoyed getting to know all of you, and it's going to continue in that way. What I would suggest is we go back and post the position. It costs very little to do that, a couple hundred dollars. And we post it, and instead of having a deadline, it's open until filled. And that way, if a candidate applies in the first few days or the first, you know, week, I can start bringing candidates to you, and we don't have to wait for like a month period for recruitment time. And that's what I would suggest now, we change gears on how we're going at this, just repost the job, because I feel better about that, if there's going to be internal candidates that didn't apply during my process, we should open it, give them a chance, and within a couple of days, someone might apply internally. And I will feed those names through you. My guess is within three or four weeks, you could be interviewing some candidates. And then I will handle the contractual negotiations from start to finish. Under the terms that I know, I've, I've heard a lot about what you'd like to see in a contract. So I would use some of that in talking to the candidates. I would then bring back a contract to you. And I can tell you, don't be hard on yourselves, because the worst, the most challenging part of a process is the contractual negotiations. It just is, it always has been, and it always will be. And I think if we take this process, we'll get there in the end. And I would have it posted by Tuesday. You can only post Tuesdays and Fridays, it's too late to get in for tomorrow. But I can have it up and going Tuesday, communicate with Manager Gerard and the supervisor, and we'll, we'll get there, we will get there, and at the end we'll all be pleased. Thank you.
The advantage of not posting an ending date is that, I know I've done the same thing myself, hiring and, or looking for a job, is that you wait until the end so that yours is the most prominent application. So if people feel that they have an ending date, they're going to wait till a few days beforehand. The other question I was going to ask Frank is, where are you talking about posting this? Because Manager Gerard gave me a great idea today, I mean, it was his idea. But where, where were you thinking, MML, MTA?
Just MML.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely needs to go to the Township Association, because we want, we need township experience. I, I think that's vital. I'm beginning to believe that more and more. Because otherwise, they come in with city ideas, and I, that's not going to work in our mix. But Randy, tell them what you were saying today about some of the other places to try.
Well, what, well, my thought process was, is we have a, we have an awful lot of folks that are visitors here that take care of their business online, that might be interested in living here, but they don't look at MTA, and they don't look at MML, but they read like Ramba, the Range Area Mountain Bike Association, and those types, and it came in on Trails Network, those types that are primarily professionals that are talking with those folks. It's not the, it's not the normal chain, basically, that you would, but it's, it's a very active chain here. They, they constantly read their publications for events and activities, and those things that they like to participate in. So, you know, it's a, I don't think it costs anything to throw into their communications.
Okay, who had the hand up? Was it Dave again? I mean, was it Dave?
Yes, Dave again.
Okay, go ahead.
We're already doing it. If we're going to let Mr. Walsh run this, then we should just let Mr. Walsh run this. If he needs any help, he'll contact somebody. Just, we need to back off of the board and let him do his job. And he'll tell us when he's got something. I think the only two decisions this board needs to make today is, do we want him to continue? If so, that's the end of that. And do we want to propose a contract extension to Manager Gerard? Once we've got those two things figured out, I think our job here is done until we hear back from Mr. Walsh.
John, did you have your hand up? Or were you agreeing?
I, I keep, I keep thinking that I think we need to resolve the issue with how long Gerard is going to stay willingly. And I, and I hear Dave saying that, I've heard it three times. And I think that, to me, is a hell of a lot more important than listening to what you're talking about, Frank.
Okay, well, I disagree, but that's all right. Ernie, go ahead.
Okay, Frank is going to be, who's going to be Frank's contact with the con, with the township? Is it still going to be Lynn and Randy?
If Randy wants to stay involved, that's...
I am not negotiating any longer for this board.
Okay, I will contact with Frank.
That's, I want to get that cleared up, that too, so.
Statutorily, it's the supervisor.
That's enough. I get one chance and that's it. I miss it. I'm still Mr. Mean Clerk.
Not at all. You were a joy to work with. I couldn't have done it without you.
But actually, statutorily, and Frank knows this, the supervisor is the personnel director, so it would be the supervisor.
Yep. Okay, Dave?
Can we bring this around a little bit quicker and entertain a motion to extend the manager's contact through December 31st of 2020?
Support.
Well, he needs to have a caveat in there that he's not going to get penalized if he backs off in six months, or nine months, or three months. So unless he feels comfortable with maybe doing a three-year or six-month, it's up to him. I mean, that's six months. If he, if he's all right with that, great, but...
Why not, why not go with three with, with the possibility to six? And just, if he'll agree to something like that.
Why don't you just, why don't you just state it as amend the contract to run no longer than December 31st, 2020?
Dan?
That's fine, yep.
You? Okay. Comment?
Randy's willing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not locking him into something, and then he gets penalized.
No, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, you know, as I say, you know, the election's in November, so if, if the... There's, there's a possibility that whoever it is that you're interviewing for, based on the election, may not be a candidate any longer. You never know, and you're, you're in a strange spot. But, but in any event, December gets us through the budget process, it gets us through COVID-19, hopefully, and it gets you basically through the election and on track for whatever's next.
So you could actually resign November 21st, if you wanted to?
No, I, no, I'll be through December 31st, but, you know, the, usually it's, usually it's the second meeting in December where you adopt the budget typically, so, you know, obviously through there.
Okay, any comments? Okay, at the same time, let's hear from Ernie first.
Question is, how are you going to present this to your family, Randy?
It's a problem.
Sometime in January of 2021? Now, you know, there's a couple of things at work here. I, I figure I've only got a few, probably a few good years of flying left, you know, before age starts to creep in. You know, commercial pilots have to retire at 65, I'm already 71, so, you know, it's, that's one of the things I'm looking at. I've got my airplane sitting in the hangar that I haven't flown in two years because of a number of, number of things. But one of the bigger ones is what we're doing right now. You know, it just eats up a lot of time, so through December's fine.
Okay.
I think they'll be okay with that.
Dave, a follow-up from you?
Yeah, it doesn't matter when you leave, I'm going to talk bad about him anyway.
I know.
Anything else? Any, Pete, did you have any comments?
I think we learned a good lesson there on how to do something. We should have included Frank earlier, because that's basically what his job is. And as a board member, you can have so much input until the end. So that's, that's what I said the other day at our last meeting. But I am thankful that Randy's there, and I think anyone who's interested in throwing their hat back into it, I think they should, and then Frank take care of it.
Okay, any other comments? Roll call, Randy, please.
I'll read the motion first, that we're, we will extend the manager's current contract until December 31st, 2020. And roll call is, Trustee Wiegand?
Before we do that, it was to, we had put a little amendment in there to it, at least December 31st of 2020 or two.
Say that, yep.
At least.
Yeah, how about Randy?
I don't know if Randy wants to stay beyond 2020.
No, the, what, what I had suggested was that you amend the contract to read that the contract run no longer than December 31st, 2020.
Okay, so the, so the motion will read to extend the contract to run no longer than December 31st of 2020.
That just leaves flexibility all around.
If we get a candidate, Randy can retire.
Okay.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Clerk retires, yes, and Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we've already made a consensus that we were going to keep Frank's services, and he's going to take care of it, so we don't need a motion on that. Okay.
Does Frank want to continue?
He said he did, yep. He may not have heard that, sorry.
I missed a lot of the conversations.
Yep, you'll have to go back and watch the meeting, that'll help. Okay. Dave? Hang on. What did he say, Randy?
Speak again, Peter.
It is, Randy's extension, is that it's the same rate of pay and everything else? Just want to understand the motion.
It's the same year.
Yeah, why wouldn't it be?
I would suggest, though, since Randy's retiring, why do we do a performance evaluation on him? We already know him.
Right.
We don't need to do that on you, Randy.
Okay, um, Dave?
Just a clarification, I know Randy Retary has excused himself from the negotiating team. Is it, the board wants to just leave Lynn there on her own, or do you want to have more than one person there? I'm curious if the board has thought about that.
My suggestion would be is just have the supervisor and Frank take care of it.
Yep.
I'm fine with that, I just didn't want anybody...
Then it's because if the supervisor will have to leave Frank, do it completely, and then report back to supervisor, and then supervisor will report back here at the end.
Yep. Okay, that's a good comment, that's all right. Anything else on this? Okay, public comment. Do we have anybody that wants to share any thoughts?
I have no emails, Lynn.
Okay. All right, you can just review the couple motions we have. All right, you can just review the couple motions we have. Oh, board member comment first. Any comments for anybody?
I just wanted to again thank Frank for, for sticking with us. And I know we'll get to the end of this.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
Um, okay. Any, read the motions then, please, Randy?
We only have two. The first one was to approve the agenda as presented, and the second one was to end the manager's contract to at least December 31st of 2020. And that was approved 7-0.
Okay. I just need one more motion.
I move to adjourn.
Support.
Go ahead, Randy.
Clerk Retires, yes. Trust, or Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Marks?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Adjourned at 4:55 PM.
Thank you.
Appreciate you getting together and being patient with all the internet issues too. Thanks to everybody else who was.